...of the United States of America and two republics for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wagner?
Here.
Councilmember Saxler?
Here.
Councilmember Instrom?
Here.
Mayor Mortar?
I'm here. Okay. So I have the pleasure of making a special proclamation, which I will read. And Tim, did you want to do anything else with the presentation tonight?
Say what?
Did you want to do anything else with the presentation tonight, or just a proclamation?
I think just go ahead.
Okay. Okay. I'm here tonight. We are here tonight to express support for the Siskiyou Startup Weekend occurring on October 5th through 7th, 2018. Whereas Google Startup Weekend entrepreneurial events are occurring all over the world and have helped create successful new enterprises, and whereas Siskiyou Startup Weekend is a 54-hour event that allows anyone to turn an idea into reality. The event starts on Friday evening when participants pitch ideas. They then form teams around the top ideas and spend the rest of the weekend validating and building their idea, aided by local mentors. On Sunday evening, teams come back together and pitch their newly-launched company to a panel of judges. And whereas Startup Weekend provides participants the opportunity to be immersed in the ideal environment for startup magic to happen. Surrounded by smart, passionate people and with the best tools and approaches at participants' disposal, participants will take giant leaps toward creating a business, becoming a founder, and connecting with the right people and resources. And participants are likely to leave the Siskiyou Startup Weekend knowing the next steps they need to take on their road to success. And whereas the city of Mount Shasta encourages the creation of new startup companies in Siskiyou County, and the Siskiyou Startup Weekend is designed to help people gain knowledge, skills, and confidence to start companies in a 54-hour weekend intensive, and adult and student participants will have access to valuable startup resources to launch new businesses in Siskiyou County. And whereas the city of Mount Shasta wishes to express support for the Siskiyou Startup Weekend event and to encourage participation by would-be entrepreneurs in the same. Now therefore, I, Kathy Mortar, Mayor of the City of Mount Shasta, hereby proclaim the city's support for the Siskiyou Startup Weekend event taking place on October 5th, 6th, and 7th, 2018, at College of the Siskies, Weed Campus, and encourage other agencies and cities to likewise support the efforts to make the October 2018 Siskiyou Startup Weekend a success for all participants and aspiring entrepreneurs. Thank you. Okay, that's an event coming right up. If you know of any aspiring entrepreneurs, please spread the word, those of you watching on television and in the audience. Okay. I'd like now to go to public comment. And I think that those of you in the audience know the public comment routine by now, and I have one of you signed up, Rosalyn. Oh, item number 11. Are there any of you who'd like to make comment about anything that's not on the agenda? No? Okay. So we'll move on. I knew you'd be up to it.
Rosalyn McCoy, Mount Shasta. So I got another notice about water, and it would be nice to hear what's going on with the water and what is going to be done about it. I kind of noticed around that time that the temperature of my water was going up, and so, I mean, it used to be I put my hands in the water and it hurt because it was so cold. And so since we've fixed all of our springs leaks, maybe we need to look at letting more of the water pass through our pipes is the only thing I could think of, you know, suggestions, something, but this keeps happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we'll move now into staff comments, and perhaps Bruce, you can begin.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Mortar, members of the council. Since our last meeting, I think the most important event that we could have report would be the fact the Delta Fire is now 98% contained. Finally get that one under control, the Cal Fire is out, the Hers Fire is basically out, so hopefully we've gotten through a fire season. I think, given the severity of the fire season, there's probably a lot that can be learned from those that were directly involved and participating in it, so we're going to be looking for coordination meetings, information meetings with the various agencies involved, basically looking at what can we take away from these incidents? What did they learn? What can they share with us so we'll be better prepared in the future in case we get more events, more events next year? It looks like the trend is clearly for increasing severity and the number of dangerous events like this. So I think we see from the Sonoma Fires and other fires, there have been administrative and organizational changes instituted by governmental agencies and things they learned, so I think we can learn from them and be better prepared. So staff will be pursuing that. In response to Ms. McCoy's comments, we did have a coliform test, and periodically by the state requirement, we test the water. We send samples to Redding for testing and analysis. Those results are sent to the water lab, water quality control, and then they review them, give us recommendations as to whether they want additional testing, just impure numbers of tests, or they want specific site tests. We complete that, and they look at those results, and then if the state feels that there's a necessity, they will issue to us a notice, citation, that the coliform test failed. Coliform is an actual occurring substance in water, but it's something that's still measured on the state level, not the federal water level. So the last incident, the test was taken August 7th and 8th, and we got our first response from the state on August 22nd, and then we were required to post the notice, get the citation then, and we were required to post that notice to the public by September 22nd. We actually issued the notification. We first posted it on the city webpage on September 11th, and we sent out the letter as required to the public on September 18th, so we were in conformance with the law. As I said, these are required tests. They don't create a real health hazard, but they're still measured by the state, and there is a public notification. The other thing that has come up that I would like to comment on is there's an International Conference of Shopping Centers conference in Los Angeles, and that will be starting on October 8th, 9th, and 10th of this year. The International Conference of Shopping Centers is an organization that basically focuses on retail development. It's a very good place to meet retail end-users, such as McDonald's and other chains like that, and developers who actually build facilities. So it's a very good place to make developer contacts. So the city's been looking at moving properties and looking for tenants, end-users, developers. It could be a very worthwhile conference. The problem with it, it's the first day, it's the next city council meeting, so...
The problem is what?
Is the next city council meeting is the first day of the conference. And I have two items on the agenda for that meeting, which would be the second, either revised first or a second reading of the nuisance ordinance, and possibly a resolution on the Active Transportation Committee. So I think attendance to this could be worthwhile, and to join ICSC as a public member would cost $100. To attend the conference would cost $425 additional, and there'd be lodging. So I'd be willing to donate the driving and the time to attend the meeting and see if we could move some of our development projects forward, make contacts. So that would conclude my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other staff comment tonight?
Clarifying questions or clarifying questions?
Okay. Want you to go?
Go ahead.
Yeah, as far as the coliform, is there an action plan? I know we have been getting coliform notices fairly regularly over the past couple of years. Is there a plan in place to see if we can't resolve this, or it sounded from your comments that this is just part of your routine at this point?
Well, coliform seems to show up periodically in water where you have stagnant water, backed water. I have experienced in other areas with this identical problem, where water isn't flowing freely constantly or majority of the time, and you're required to do tests, and it shows up and shows up. You open up the system and flow the water and retest, and it's fine.
Okay.
One of the potential solutions or improvements is of course the installation of Water Tank 1 and the new water line, and also the installation of the cleanup valve.
Right here, there was a...
I'm sorry, Rosalyn. To where we have these dead-end lines to put valves, we could flush the system more periodically. That would go a long way to reduce the events of these tests coming back positive.
Okay. So the plan is to potentially rinse or flow the water at the endpoints a little more regularly?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So I have an additional question about that, Bruce. Were the samples that failed on those two days at a location where they have failed previously? And if so, could we, I think you said in your action that we flushed some mains and lines at the water storage tanks. Could we do so, as Barbara implied, as a preventative measure if the samples are failing at the same time, I mean, at the same place?
If the samples continue to fail at the same place, then we need to look at more systematic flushing. If they're happening randomly, then it's a little more difficult. I know talking with Rod, his long-term program is to put in more valves that allow for flushing. So we'll eventually, hopefully, this problem will be eliminated. But as to your question, if one place, in this case, I don't know if it is a recurring place, a positive coliform test or something that has happened in the city on numerous occasions, I can't respond to the same site question. So something to look into, if it is the same site, we need to put more emphasis there. But overall, we need to have a system that is, has less dead-end spots, so we have more flowing water.
So are you agreeing that you will talk to Rod about whether or not it's occurring in the same places, and if we could do some preventative flushing of some sort?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And I was, I'm glad to hear that we posted on the website, at least within a couple weeks of the initial sampling, but I'd sure like to see that backed up. I know that Rod has a lot on his plate, but it doesn't seem like it would be a lot to move that forward a bit so that the notification really meant something. We've talked about that before. I'm assuming you're managing those priorities as best you can, but maybe Rod doesn't have to be involved in the actual issuance of the site, of the notification. Just please look at some alternative ways to get the notification out earlier and more timely. Okay, any other, thank you. Any other questions of, Bruce?
Yes, thank you. Bruce, there was a inquiry, I think, on, what's it called, neighborhood?
Nextdoor.
Huh?
The Nextdoor app?
Nextdoor app.
Mm-hmm.
By a woman who asked if water needs to be boiled, so perhaps you can publicly answer that question?
No, you do not.
Okay. In terms of the ICSC, actually, I think the, for a government attendance, I think it's only $100 or $125, I think $125 versus the $475.
I think it's a little higher than you were expecting.
So that would be even more economical. I would be supportive of perhaps moving your two items from the October...
8th.
8th agenda to the following agenda, so that you'd be able to attend the conference.
And if I may, I would, it would be good to find out if the Economic Development Council is planning to attend.
I contacted them, and Tanya Dowes said she would attend if I would attend.
She would what?
She would attend if I was going to attend.
Okay. Other questions of staff?
Any more staff reports? Pardon me? Any more staff reports?
Yeah, just a second.
Any more questions of staff? Does anyone else on the staff want to offer comment? Okay, council comments then.
Well, I think the deputy city clerk might have some comments about vacancies.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I don't have in front of me the exact vacancies that we have available, but we do have multiple committees with vacancies, so if anyone is interested in participating in any of our committees, please contact me at City Hall.
Thank you. Okay, council comments. Paul? Nothing? John? No?
Barbara? No? No? Wow.
That's all for me then, this time. I would like to offer my thanks to the Beautification Committee, who partnered this time with the Mount Shasta Trail Association in cleaning up the North Triangle Welcome Site on Mount Shasta Boulevard. It looks amazing. It was very overgrown, and I'm hopeful that the Trail Association will continue to see the benefit of partnering with the Beautification Committee. Many folks came out in full swing, and I want to thank the Public Works Department, too, for setting it up so that they can do their work safely. Those folks spend many, many hours volunteering to keep our landscaped areas beautiful, and you may have noticed the planters, as well as the banners that have been hung. Really appreciate their efforts. I attended, I want to spend a minute talking about a meeting I attended last week that was offered by Jedi, during which they invited a member of the Small Business Association to come and talk about the disaster services available to businesses. I won't go into any detail regarding the services that are available within counties that where a federal emergency has been declared. That was not Siskiyou County, certainly Shasta County. Siskiyou County, though, does fall within what they call, well, it's a surround, it's an area surrounding an area where economic injury occurred from disasters, so they know that the, that there's a spillover effect from, in this case, the Cal Fire, the wildfires that occurred, and so they're offering some services. One thing they mentioned, which I thought was of note, I'm sure that they're speaking to areas where a federal declaration of disaster has been made, but they said that 40% of business owners go out of business following a natural disaster. Very sobering statistic. So I went to see what sort of assistance they might be able to offer businesses in Mount Shasta and our area, having seen the impact, just anecdotally, of the smoke and the highway closures to our area. And what they have is a, they have an economic injury disaster loan available to businesses they, for 3.61% interest, and the first payment isn't due until five months following the receipt of the first payment. She encouraged all business people who are suffering any kind of reduction in business to apply for it, because it does take a little while. I think she said three to four weeks, depending on how complicated and how together you are with your paperwork, but you don't have to take the, you don't have to take the loan if you are approved, but she just suggests that you get it rolling. There's no cap on the total budget from Congress that comes. Congress has never turned away any requests from Small Business Administration for disaster loans to businesses. The deadline to apply is May 6th, which is nine months after the federal declaration, but again, she encourages businesses, even if you're beginning to get concerned, because it can take a while for the effects to be known. She encourages you to apply now. Also nonprofits, I believe the, because nonprofits can also see a drop in their membership resulting from people's concerns about whatever disaster they've just experienced, and I believe, she said that the interest rate is 2.5%. So just wanted you all to know about that. There is a disaster loan outreach center in Redding that they're going to operate through the 3rd of October. So you can, if you prefer to do things, business in person, you're welcome to do that. I don't know what the office address is, but you can go to sba.gov/disaster. And one last item then is the Superior California Economic Development Representative was there, and they're offering bridge loans, what they're calling a bridge loan, excuse me, up to $5,000 for a 24-month, and repayment is at 6% interest. They have a 72-hour turnaround with, once you have a completed application, 72-hour turnaround for up to $5,000. So Superior California Economic Development, you may want to look into that. And lastly then, I'd like to speak again, as Bruce mentioned, to the relief that I feel, as many I'm sure of you do, about how it appears we've slipped by a major event in Mount Shasta associated with the fire season this year. We did, you know, it appears that the Delta Fire is 98% contained, but I want to underscore the importance of emergency preparedness. I know Bruce talked about his intention to meet with the other agencies to better understand the workings when we're under a unified command, and we have a national Forest Service team, we have Cal Fire, we have a number of entities, CHP, Caltrans, all working together and how that works. It's really important that we understand that ahead of time. I went to a session, which I will cover later in the agenda, when I attended the League of Cities Annual Conference on Wildfire Preparedness, and I intend, when I get to that point, to go over the points that I recorded from the members of the communities of Santa Rosa and Ventura regarding the lessons they learned and what they hope that we will learn in advance of any emergency that hits us. So I'll do that later in tonight's agenda. And in addition, I'm going to ask for an agenda, a future agenda item regarding what are the lessons that we've learned?
Point of order, it's not future agenda item time?
Yeah, I know, but I want the public to know earlier on that I'm going to do this. I'm going to ask for an agenda item which covers lessons learned, contingency planning, notification, forming volunteer teams, and understanding more about, and doing more training regarding a variety of things, and I'll go into more detail about that. I think now is the time to jump for anything we can do to better prepare ourselves for the eventuality. It's not if, it's when, as many folks have been saying. So thank you for your attention. And now I'd like to go on to, unless there are any other comments, last-minute comments from council? I'd like to go on to the consent agenda. City manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added heretofore shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of minutes, September 10th, 2018, regular city council meeting. B, acceptance of Brown Act committee minutes, Beautification Committee, July 11th and August 15th, 2018. C, approval of disbursements, accounts payable 9/13/18, total gross payroll and taxes for the period ending 9/9/18. D, monthly financial investment report, and E, second reading and adoption of Muriel Review Ordinance, CCO 18-05. Is there a motion for approval? Move to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous approval. Thank you. Let's move on now to item eight, public hearing, utilization of CDBG funds to replace the roof of the main lodge at City Park. Muriel, I guess we get to hear from you on this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Before you is a second resolution to open a public hearing for the replacement of the roof on the building that we're in right now. CDBG changed their rules, and instead of having one public hearing meeting, they now require two. Thus, this is coming back to the council again, as well as to the public again, to see if they have any issues or concerns, or if council has any issues or concerns.
So, okay, so it's changed now, we need to, if we approve it tonight, we would approve it and then move to a second reading?
No, we've already done, we've already done it once, several months ago, and then we found out that we have to do two.
I see. Okay, that's why. Understand, thank you.
So we're following the new rules.
Okay.
As they change, you know, quite frequently within CDBG.
Okay. Questions of Muriel, other than the one that I just asked?
So, Muriel, does this grant cover the full cost of the rebuild of the roof?
Yes, it does.
Other questions? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing then. Are there any comments from the public members sitting in the audience?
Rosalind McCoy, Mount Shasta. So is this a grant or a loan?
This is a grant.
Are there any other comments from the public members? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and go to council discussion. Any comments from those of us on the council? No?
No.
Yes.
Move that the city council approve the use of the CDBG program income for the replacement of the roof of the main lodge at City Hall and authorize the finance director to sign the sub-recipient agreement with Great Northern Corporation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous approval, thank you. Okay, moving right along then to item nine on your agenda, budget adjustment for staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, otherwise known as SAFER grant. SAFER grant-funded firefighters. That's also Muriel, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. As you know, the city was, I'm trying to look for the right, right word, I'm sorry, awarded, thank you very much, a three-year grant to hire two firefighters. And in the first year, we share 25% of the cost for those two fire personnel. So we need to adjust our 2018, 2019 budget to take that into consideration. The total, the 25% cost of those two people is $27,794 for, for a full year. Realize that we're already into the budget year, so it'll slop over into, into the next year, and then we'll, I will take that into consideration for the, how I'm calculating the second and third years.
Okay, thank you. Questions of Muriel?
Muriel, can you explain those categories on page 40? The general fund, fire, there's a 6,001, 6,010, 15, 20, and 25?
Yep. So 6,001 is a salary, 6,010 is FICA, 6,015 is PERS, 6,020 is workers' comp, 6,025 is health insurance.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from Muriel? Okay, which CCR number is this?
49.
49. Is there someone who'd like to make a motion?
Do you want to open up for public comment?
Oh, public comment, yes, thank you. Are there those of you in the audience who'd like to make a comment about this item? Doesn't look like it, okay, thank you. How about a motion?
Move to approve the attached resolution approving a budget adjustment for the 25% shared cost of the two fire personnel for the 2018, 2019 budget.
I'll second the, the motion to approve resolution, CCR 18-49.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, thank you. Moving now to number 10, approval of EDA grant application. Bruce?
So in the past, this staff has come before you, and we've talked about enhanced infrastructure financing districts, we've talked about financing mechanism to supply sewer water and power to the landing property to make it more developable. EDA, the Federal Economic Development Administration, has a, a grant program for planning and feasibility studies that fits within this category. We have worked with the City Economic Development Council and staffs, put together a grant application to submit to EDA, and we're asking permission, for permission for the city manager to release that application to the federal agency for consideration. We're asking for council approval of that motion.
Thank you. Questions for Bruce?
So my recollection is that this study would be more general than just regarding any EIFD for the landing, but at this point, it's strictly for infrastructure development, feasibility study of infrastructure development via an EIFD.
It's the, it's using the EIFD and the model of the landing to create an infrastructure financing program.
Right, but just for the, just for the landing?
It will be using the landing and the growth of the landing as a funding mechanism, but it is a funding mechanism that can apply to the landing and to other non-contiguous sites without the city, and as we move forward, we can create sites and roll money through. So that's a, one to fund the landing, two to fund and upgrade our existing infrastructure.
Okay, so this study would actually cover those possibilities, you think?
Yes, the feasibility and the, the market generation of new growth for taxes and the establishment of the districts.
Thank you, John. Is there an amount you have in mind that this would cost? I have no idea.
The grant, after looking, kind of reaching out to some of the consultants that do these types of feasibility studies, we're putting a grant in, in the $100,000 range.
How much?
$100,000 is the request.
Can I get in that business? Okay, thank you. Other questions of Bruce?
Bruce, is there any particular reason why you chose the EIFD route versus any other finance route?
Well, there, since the abolition of redevelopment by the state, we're left with very few funding tools, and this is another form of new tax increment financing districts that are being created to give local governments abilities to, to find revenue sources that do not increase taxes and fund needed improvements. The other mechanism that can be used is really in association with this is the CREA, which is geared more towards housing development. But the Federal Economic Development Administration does not consider housing part of economic development. That falls with the federal government within the Community Development Block Grant, basically HUD, and their, their jurisdiction. So that's why this is just focusing on the EIFD, so it fits their criteria.
Even if there's potential housing developed on the landing, you still think EIFD is the better way to go, since there's commercial? Is that what you're saying?
Okay, thank you. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Should public comment?
Move that we open it up for public hearing?
Oh, my gosh.
For public comment?
I, I guess I'm just not wanting that tonight. I'm sorry. So, I'd love to hear any public comment. I should appoint, I should just ask one of you to remind me every time, it's becoming that way. So is there anyone who would like to comment in the audience? Okay, no comment from anyone tonight. Thank you.
So now that's back to council, I would move that council approve, that staff submit the grant application to the Federal Economic Development Administration to provide funding for enhanced infrastructure financing district feasibility study.
Can't hear, okay.
So I'm moving approval of grant, of the staff submitting a grant application for the matter that we just discussed.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous approval then, thank you. We have one fly who's making the rounds.
I think there might be more than one.
Okay, okay, now, item number 11. The first reading of Chapter 1.04, Public Nuisance Abatement Ordinance, and Chapter 1.05, Nuisance Lean Abatement Procedure. Bruce, can we hear your staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the councils. As I'm sure you're aware, we, we have been working for some time to abate certain properties that are not being maintained, that are not up to building code, and create a clear and present public danger under the Health and Safety Building Code. We have, in our, in our efforts to address this and deal with property owners, we've run into some obstacles in that the current city codes lack strict enforcement measures, and is, in a move to be, to have more ability to address and enforce issues like this, city attorney has recommended these two ordinances. The first ordinance, which is Chapter 104, addresses the public with called public nuisances. And so when you have, buildings are closed, they don't meet building codes, they're dilapidated, they, they have trash that's visible, they create a health hazard, this gives the city manager the authority to have an officer go to the property owner, identify the problem, and ask that the problem be corrected, give time to correct it. If they fail to correct it, to then cite the owner in writing that they're in violation of the code, and to fine them. If they don't give the period to correct, and then to institute a defining process to basically motivate and force people to move forward with clarity. It also sets, gives the city manager authority to appoint an independent hearing officer to hear any appeals that would come from members of the public that have been issued a citation. And so we, we put this together, we have it before you for consideration. And so many of these properties are owned by absentee landlords, people that have purchased property and are just sitting on it. And they do constitute a health hazard and are not in performance of the code. And we have tried the approach of working with them, trying to develop incentive programs that are not mandatory, and basically it has not been effective. So that's why we have brought this to you. Chapter 105 is, sets procedures under which if the city moves on a piece of property, and there's a clear code violation, and we, we move on that, and we, we correct the problem. What we do, we go out on contract, if we can't do it internally, we hire a licensed contractor, we correct the problem, we move the danger, and we lean the properties. We did that a year, year and a half ago with the property known as The Nest. We were having problems with enforcement there, and we had, we had citations that sat on that property for years, but it sold, and because we had leaned the property, the city collected the price it spent boarding up buildings, and the, the labor and the materials. Had we not done that, that property would move, there'd be no way for the city to recover their expenses. This, Chapter 1.05 clearly sets the authority again for the city to do so, has a clause, this is if it's 20, over $20,000, and this is, that clause is purely subjective, so with the council has a, a preference for a different number that, you know, that's fine, let us know, we'll make that amendment. Since the $20,000, if the abatement is going to cost more than $20,000, before we do it, it comes to council for approval. If it's under it, we can basically do it on the city manager's recommendation. So we have both these before you. We would ask approval of the, you know, the first, not approval of the ordinance, but the first reading of the ordinance is set this for a second reading. I'm happy to answer your questions, or the public's questions.
Thank you. Questions for Bruce? Okay, you like it. John? Questions? Barbara?
I guess I'm wondering, I did take a drive around town this morning to look at what it looked like from the street, some of these properties. And the most unsightly ones are the ones that have, are boarded up, you know, and basically not in use, absent, I know there's absentee owners or just owners that aren't moving forward, there's sort of a stagnant energy when month after month, we don't see any movement on these properties. I'm wondering if we could, well, maybe this is in discussion, but did you consider maybe doing a focused on, on, on these properties, a focus ordinance specifically for the ones that are boarded up and have little, have, we've seen little progress on them?
Well, we certainly have properties, some are more severe than others, and we have properties that we have worked with over a longer period of time that we have not resolved, so those would be easy to identify. Before I answer, try to answer your question on an absolute factual basis, I'd be concerned about an ordinance that isn't applied uniformly to the same conditions, that seem to be just pulling out certain properties for enforcement. So I'd refer, if that was the pleasure of the council, I would refer that back to the city attorney to make sure we're not violating any laws in terms of equity and fairness.
Through the chair. Bruce, you and I have discussed this, these draft ordinances, and I've indicated to you that, that I would like to provide some amendments or, or fine tuning, I, I think, which would help the ordinances and help the city. I did not have time to actually draft those before tonight's meeting. Would you be concerned the fact that this has been going on for, for months? I appreciate the fact that we finally got some draft ordinances, but would you be willing to say, set over this matter for a couple weeks, for, well, either one or two meetings, so that perhaps we can further refine the, the draft proposed ordinances before they come to the council for a vote?
Well, I guess, should that question not be directed toward the council, about how we feel about it?
Well, I'm asking staff first.
Well, I would, I would have no problem with you. You have talked to me about this, and some areas that you would like to address, so I, if we, if it would be the pleasure of the council, that I, what I would suggest is we move this, for it to have a, the second first reading, do it the last meeting in October, since I won't be present for the first meeting in October now. And in the interim, that you put together your questions and refer them to, to the manager and to the city attorney, and so we can redraft this and bring it back. Also, in that process, if the other council members have areas of concern or questions, they can do the same thing. And I, I would like to hear what the public may have to say about these two ordinances, so we can take their, their thoughts into consideration also. But then with that proviso, I would have no problem with that.
Well, I, I just think that that's somewhat redundant. If we have a fairly good idea that there's going to be some revisions to these, we could just defer consideration, we could hear from public, hear public comment tonight, and then just defer... We could hear from public, hear public comment tonight and then just defer the first reading until this second meeting in October.
Okay.
Well, I do have some questions that I'd like to ask for clarification.
Sure.
And then we can take up that suggestion. Tim? There's mention, and I'm sure, sorry, I don't have the page number. There's mention of an appeals processing fee. Should the owner want to appeal it? There's mention in here of an appeals processing fee. And I wondered if your intention was to establish a separate resolution for that fee? Or can we just fold that into this ordinance, whatever that fee would be?
Well, I was in favor of having the the question, the fee of appeals and the whole thing folded into an ordinance. You can do it either way. But I would prefer to have it all rolled into one ordinance.
So if we decide to redo it, that would be one item that you would have for consideration?
Correct.
Okay. Could you also, who, do you know who you would be selecting for a hearing officer?
City manager Pope had asked to make an announcement to you planning commissioners, and we have had interest from two of our planning commissioners who would be willing to serve pending the workload and demand that it has.
So it would be a planning commissioner?
And it would be on a volunteer basis.
And be on a what?
Volunteer basis.
Volunteer basis.
So by having a planning commissioner, you avoid the possibility of having to hire an independent hearing officer and you maintain a separate review process and a review by somebody that's removed from the direct enforcement. So you have some third-party objectivity taking place here.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you. So on page 48, G5, you mention "Rules of evidence provided by California state law need not be followed." I'm wondering if you could speak to that?
Yes. So that statement is in there because these types of hearings, they do allow for hearsay information. In other words, when someone, if someone were in a hearing and presented a position or an opinion, opposition can't stand up and say, wait, you didn't file that in the proper forms in the proper time. You don't have third-party documentation, therefore it's inadmissible evidence, which would be rules of evidence under state law. This is a much more informal process where the hearing officer deals more with fact and with opinions. So that's why that statement was included.
Okay. Thank you. I think there's another, there's another section on page 49 that states "The fines apply only to structural and zoning issues regarding public safety." I don't understand that. Structural and zoning issues regarding public safety. Why would our fines apply only to that particular aspect of the violations mentioned? I think it may, is it M? 49M?
Yes. I have it in front of me. That item should be stricken from the ordinance on the advice of council.
Okay. I like that idea.
M?
And then a question for clarification. In terms of the violations and the amount that would be charged
Yes.
per day, is that amount, which begins at $100 each day, is that per violation for each nuisance? So there's a number, there's like A through H or something, I've forgotten now, the number of violations that can be cited. Is the $100 a day multiplied by the number of citations for each independent violation?
So the alternative is either by each violation or by each citation. Citation listing multiple violations.
Right.
Actually, according to the city attorney, we can do it either way. We could go to a particular property and on day one cite, issue citations for every single violation. See, one for the plumbing, one for lighting, one for other electrical, one for roofing, and water, just go on and on and on. And those would all be individual citations. Each would carry a fine of $100 per day for every day they remained in violation. Or we take the approach of a citation with multiple violations, but it's only one fine of $100 per day for each day.
Okay. So thank you. So that would need to be clarified.
You have the ability to go both ways.
Uh huh. Okay. And my last question then, thank you for your patience, has to do with the lean abatement ordinance?
The what?
The lean, the lean ordinance, the second, the 1.05. The recoverable expenses? My question is, are they retroactive? For some of the more egregious situations we've endured over the years, can, are those expenses that we've already incurred before passage of whatever ordinance is passed, are those recoverable?
If they were leaned, they're leans against a property and they're recoverable. If they are not leaned, they are not recoverable. So we could go back and cite a particular property if the condition is still in existence. We can cite them under the ordinance, apply the fine, but take a new citation.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we have a proposal on the floor here that we-
And we could like to get some public comment on the ordinance.
Ah, yes. I have no excuse. In fact, I even have a person who signed up for it.
Why do you think they're here?
Rosalyn, would you like to come up and comment, please? And anybody else is welcome to comment as well.
Okay, Rosalyn McCoy, Mount Shasta. So in reading this ordinance, it doesn't say that there's any warning whatsoever. It doesn't specify that. It says that you, your very first violation, it's $100. And I didn't see where it said a day. I thought that you got a violation, you had X amount of time to correct it. So that's odd. now if you go down the street, I doubt that you'll see very many homes that doesn't have cracks in their sidewalks or driveways that you wouldn't look at. And it's all subjective if it is an eyesore or not. And so I understand what you're trying to do is take care of public health issues, boarded up buildings, something really extreme. But you have gone out and you found so much to throw into this pile that you have created a potential monster. To have, where you can't have vehicles parked. If your landscape, your home, is different than your neighbor's, then that could be a violation. And all of these things are subjective. And you can't have an ordinance all based on someone's, whomever in the future, opinion. Could it be a real estate agent? They want to sell a house down the street and so they look at everybody else and go, okay, I'm going to make you all have new paint. Having chalky paint? I mean, it is a slippery slope of going, okay, so we're going to say how often we want everybody's houses painted? And the charge is, okay, $100, and then we're going to charge you time for someone to come out and inspect your home and pay for pictures? And if we're going to have aerial photographs, we're going to have to, the homeowner, business, whomever, has to pay for that also? And so, yes, I agree with you, Tim. Things, this needs to be gone through in writing and a lot of striking needs to happen. And clean it up and make it really a usable ordinance and not something that is a slippery slope to insanity. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Peggy?
Yes, my name is Peggy Rish and I am a homeowner here in Mount Shasta. And, you know, on your first page of this issue is the quote, "Property owners have constitutional rights and are entitled to due process." And I'd really like each of the council members to really think about that quote that's on the forefront of this ordinance. Because I think, as Rosalyn, that your intention here has overstepped what the true intent is, which is public health and safety. And that if you step over these rights of protecting us as public health and safety, you are infringing on the constitutional rights of the property owners of this city. And I know that's not what you want to do. So there are some improvements that can be made. For example, as I look through the definition of nuisance that's on page 45, 1.04, 0.020, that is, as Rosalyn points out, so subjective. And yet the consequences for the property owner are horrific. Horrific. So I really need you to take a look at that section of the definition of nuisance. Because I don't have any problem with those issues as it relates to public health and safety. But that section there, it needs to be eliminated. And all the sections in this ordinance ordinance that are related to how nuisance is defined in that part of the existing ordinance. So the other thing that I see as a really red flag is section 1.05, 1.130, where it states that if the property owner fails to receive a notice, that basically it's not, all actions that proceed once that notice is received, and they didn't receive it, is of no consequence to, you know, and all the burden falls on the property owner. Now, that seems like something that could easily be rectified by you get a signed receipt from the notice. Much of the legal businesses and legal notices, Tim probably is aware of this, they require they require some confirmation that the notice has been received. And for the city to proceed with really horrific actions against a property owner that could cost them tens of thousands of dollars and have something in an ordinance that says, well, it doesn't really matter if they didn't get it, everything that happens after that is still on the shoulders of the property owner. So I look forward to seeing this cleaned up and that the true intent is really to protect our public health and safety and not infringe on the subjective areas of what is defined as a nuisance that is not related to health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Other comments?
Tricia Lovio, Mount Shasta. Just hearing on this, just recently, how it could be a slippery slope, because I live on wetlands. And my property's like 120, but what's really been developed is like 90 probably. But I'm responsible for that, but I'm not to touch it. Right now, it's blackberries. And the city has to come clean the fire hydrant here and the fire hydrant in the back. But to make this say that is an eyesore, yeah, it's ugly. Is it going to be me because it's wetlands and I can't touch it? Am I going to have to be, you have to come clean that out when I can't touch it? That's kind of like, well, wait a minute, that's not right. Plus, I noticed in front of my yard, for three years, I've been trying to finish up front flowerbed, and it's a hedge of sweet peas and dry grass. And it's like, wow, I wouldn't want that $100 a day of fine to hurry up and get myself out there pulling that up. So it just seems like, who says that I have to? Whose opinion is it that, that's not a public safety hazard? It could be a fire hazard at some point. But who's to say that I don't like the way you look? So to me, it's just like, you, who's, whose opinion is saying fix my property up because I don't like the way it looks? Because I dabbed down the street and, ooh, you just put that fence in. I'm not too sure about the color of it. This is just happening, a fence down our street. It's not normal, but it's beautiful. And it's like, well, would they have to make their boards all straight? Because they're, you know, and they're slats like scrap wood? But are you going to stain it? It might look pretty then, you know? Who's to say? Whose opinion is going to be, I don't see that as public health and safety, but it makes it sound like that's what could be done to me. And I just want to comment that that's not constitutional as far as I'm concerned. But that's my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you, Tricia. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. So we have a proposal from council member Sterns to postpone this for a couple of-
To continue the matter to the second meeting of October. Might provide some additional, might provide an opportunity to do some cleanup work before we have to consider the first reading.
Are there consequences that you are concerned about, Bruce?
No, I think that'll be, that'll be adequate.
Adequate, did you say?
Yes.
Okay.
That one gives us time to take the public comment into consideration, council's comments, make adjustments to get it back on that agenda. And I don't foresee any emergency coming up that we can't deal with.
Okay, thank you. Other council discussion?
Yeah, I support Tim's, after listening to public comment, I think it should be cleaned up. I mean, we don't want to interfere with people's personal expression of their fence in their front yard, as long as it doesn't violate zoning laws and setbacks, like, you know? But I think what I look at is people who haven't taken the pine needles off their roof in 10 years and it's a fire hazard. That's what I look at, as something that needs to be done. Or somebody who lives in a residence zone and has 25 cars in the backyard, that's a violation. You know, I think we have to use common sense here. But I think we have to express that we want people to be able to use their own personal taste in the color and things that they want to paint their house. You know, but there's a lot of, I drive by a lot of places and there's a lot of dangerous stuff in people's yards that kids can wander into or animals and get hurt. You know, to me, that needs to be taken care of. Or we're going to be blamed for that. So to express your own, you know, your own selves and your freedoms, I'm 100% for that. And I think we should put something in here that kind of clarifies that we aren't, we aren't the Nazis trying to make everyone have the same paint color. Although sometimes I wish we could. No. Thank you.
Was that a second to the motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I guess I was curious. I'd like to hear what Tim had in mind as far as changes. Did you have a general sense?
I think we have plenty of time to work with staff on that.
I guess I'm just wondering, are we in agreement or do we, are we leaning towards health and safety versus aesthetics? Or is that to be determined? Is that what you're saying? John?
Yeah, there's a section that says, that could be construed, that some umpire could say that what is being done at a property is depreciating the value of other properties nearby. And it could relate to aesthetics, it could relate to unfinished- And it could, it could relate to aesthetics, it could relate to unfinished construction, it could relate to something dangerous. That type of thing needs to be cleared up, correct?
The, the purpose of these sections would be to deal with particular ISORs that, that we're aware of, and properties that... Nuisance is fairly well-defined in, in the law.
All right.
So it's not, I don't like the paint color, or I don't like the type of fence.
But it's, nuisance seems...
But, but one of the concerns I had, I, after going through the, uh, the drafts, was, was in terms of subjectivity also. And I think that these drafts can be made better.
Yeah, and I think that some of the more problem properties have to do with the, it seems like nuisance seems to be equal to lack of care somehow. Again, that's subjective, but I mean, I think that when you see a property that's been stagnant for years on end, boarded up, that equals, to me, lack of care, that somehow.
Lack of care, attractive nuisance, something that kids could get into and get injured. There's, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to, to, on the table.
Continue it.
Yeah, yeah. To continue, uh, this discussion, two meetings out, if possible. As early as two meetings out.
Is it a first reading or a second reading?
It would be a first reading.
Another first reading. But I thought, I'm not sure if we're gonna cancel the eighth meeting, or whether we're gonna have someone else here.
That's another subject. We're not doing this subject on the eighth.
The motion was to move this item to the second meeting in October.
Oh, to the second meeting in October.
If, if you're ready by then, if it's ready by then. So not before October twenty-second. Is, is, so we have a first, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and he opposed. Okay, unanimous again, thank you. Okay, item number twelve. Discussion and possible action on the orchard property annexation. Juliana?
So it was requested of the city staff to offer recommendation slash presentation of the Roseburg Orchard Property Annexation Project. Some of you may know, some of you may not, that this annexation has gone through a pretty lengthy process, beginning in two thousand and five. Uh, there was a housing study on the property, looking at feasibility of housing on the orchard property in two thousand and five. Um, I gave a synopsis of that report on page fifty-six through fifty-seven. Um, that report was used as the basis to begin the annexation process in two thousand and eight. Um, and CDBG funds were acquired to move further past the recommendation for housing on there to do a pre-zoning. So kinda to run through the annexation process, there's five distinct steps in that process. And one of the first is pre-zoning, which basically takes the current zoning code that you have in your city and applies those zoning codes to the property to either reflect the current uses of the developed property or to zone vacant properties for future uses that you would like to see if annexed into the property. Um, the next part of that is LAFCO consultation. So the, LAFCO is a third-party planning board that basically advocates between different jurisdictions for annexations, incorporations, and different types of land regulation. So our sphere of influence is determined by LAFCO, among other things. But primarily, they deal with annexations and incorporation. Um, so once you have your pre-zoning and you go through the LAFCO application process, you have sixty days to develop a tax negotiation agreement with the other jurisdiction. In this case, it would be Siskiyou County. Um, so as we've discussed previously, there's a tax agreement for the Roseburg Landing property, and that was done through the annexation process. Um, so once that negotiation is done, we go through basically a protest process of the property owners. If they would like to protest, or if they would not, you move forward. Um, and then ultimately, a final, um, a final filing is made by LAFCO and the City of Mount Shasta to incorporate those properties. So the City of Mount Shasta decided to start with the pre-zoning, which includes a SEQA documentation. Typically, it's an initial study. Um, I haven't seen very many cases where it is not an initial study. Um, so CDBG funds were used for the pre-zoning as well, at, which looked at the feasibility of pre-zoning. Um, the intent at that time was to pre-zone that property mixed-use development in two thousand and eight, as well as zone the residential properties that already exist a residential use. Uh, and that also included an initial study. Some of the things that came out of that conceptual pre-zoning were that there were a lot of constraints on the property. There's a high environmental constraint due to the intermittent stream and wetlands on the south side. Uh, traffic flows are very limited on Ream Avenue due to vehicle capacity, and noise from Interstate Five, and the railroad would limit the types of uses that were on the property. Um, but the nice things were, it was already pre-zoned in the general plans. So when you go to zone a property, it has to be in compliance with your general plan land use map. And the land use map already said mixed-use development. Um, the wetland and intermittent stream can be used to offset other projects in the City of Mount Shasta. For example, if we were to fill a wetland on city property, we could use that as kind of a give-or-take ratio with the wetland that would be negotiated between the Army Corps. Um, it's really good for solar orientation, and then it has access to primary water and sewer infrastructure along Ream Avenue. Um, the conceptual plan was completed, an initial study was completed, and a mitigated negative declaration was adopted by the city council in two thousand and nine. And if you take a look at page ninety-four, I kinda have a timeline of events to kinda put in perspective for you what happened. So the pre-zoning happens, it goes to city council in two thousand and nine. A couple of other things are done in between that initial presentation. They ran into some, okay, here we go, sorry. They ran into a couple of issues. A law, a lawsuit was filed that the traffic and noise analysis were inadequate for the initial study that was prepared. The city did not go to court on that litigation. They decided to rescind, uh, city council voted to rescind the mitigated negative declaration to avoid litigation. Um, and then they also received about three to four protest letters from private property owners in the orchard, the proposed orchard annexation. So protesting really quick, so there are twelve parcels in the orchard annexation proposal. The city owns two of those parcels, the others are all privately owned. So what happens in an annexation is that private property owners can say, no, I don't wanna be annexed. It's very similar to a two-eighteen process, where they have to show up to a meeting and file a, um, because I can't think of the word. Protest, thank you. Um, they have to file a protest ballot at that meeting. And so there's a couple of different ways how it works. Primarily, there are two ways that are followed in, in most cases. So it depends on how many registered voters are in that annexation section. And so if there are twelve or more voters in the, in the proposed annexation, each one of those voters gets a vote. And if you get less than twenty-five percent protests, it passes. If you get between twenty-five and fifty percent protests, you have to go to a general election, which means it's put up for a vote between the Siskiyou County and City of Mount Shasta voters, registered voters, if that property should be annexed into, into the city. If it gets over fifty percent protest, it fails. Um, so I'm not quite sure how many registered voters are in here. Um, that would be information we would have to find out if the city council wants to move forward with this type of project. But if there are less than twelve voters in this area, it is done by assessed property value. So what that basically means is each person in this proposed annexation has an assessed property value. The City of Mount Shasta, for example, has approximately ninety-eight thousand dollars of assessed property value in the annexation. That is not the majority. Um, so basically, what would happen is the City of Mount Shasta would have to get a majority, so less than half of the total assessed value of that to go along with it. So if more than fifty percent of the assessed value protests, then it fails. So there's no general election in that circumstance. So that'll go into a recommendation that was not into the staff report.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So how many, there were twelve parcels. Two of the parcels are ours.
Correct. One is commercial.
And how many of those parcels protested?
Uh, so we, on the record, I found that it was mentioned that there were three people in the annexation who had, who had concerns with the annexation. I did not have a copy of those letters, nor do I know what their concerns were. Um, and there were possible, there was possibly a fourth that might've come to a meeting. Um, but there was, it was a legitimate concern from the city at the time, and so...
Are you saying that the possibly three letters were three parcels?
I don't know.
We don't know, okay.
I don't, we don't go that far back. Um, so the, so there was a concern that also private property owners were not in favor of the annexation. Um, and so there was a, a motion by the city council to, again, like I said, rescind the mitigated negative dec, and move forward with talking to these property owners to get them on board. Um, that's pretty essential. Um, and the city council voted in late two thousand and nine to move forward with additional studies on noise and traffic for the annexation to deal with the, the potential litigation. Um, so basically, a proposal was put forward in the middle of two thousand and ten that basically had, and those were the prices that you saw in the staff reports for the additional studies on noise and traffic. One of the things that was recommended is that the CDBG feasibility study did talk about housing is not a good use for those properties, for the city-owned properties, due to the noise, environmental, as well as other concerns. And so at the time, it was presented to the city council that city staff recommends pre-zoning for employment center, which is what was already the zoning in the Siskiyou County zoning code, um, to match the counting. And then estimate, they, they estimated the noise and traffic studies based off of that, which would be a lot less. Um, and then would move forward with the completion of the project. So in April two thousand and ten, city council votes to not proceed with annexation due to lack of funding, and annexation was not a priority at the time. So putting that into context, reading through some of the minutes, uh, that was during the, the recession, and so there was a huge concern about budget at the time, and so the city council was not in favor of moving forward with the annexation. Um, they did ask for a revisit in two thousand and twelve, and then they, again, took no action. Um, and then, again, you can see, we presented in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, twice. And then in two thousand and seventeen, it was presented, and no action was taken in any of those. Um, so one of the things to also note, between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and fifteen, there were three different planners at that time, so the project could've been put on the desk, as well as, you know, no action was recommended from city council. Um, so kind of where we're at right now, and, and going to my recommendations. I had issued a memo concerning this in two thousand and seventeen about, you know, we're in a general plan process, which may change our zoning code, which would then change how we pre-zone. Um, but also, you know, lack of funding for this. So cost estimates related to annexation can range anywhere from seventy-five thousand to about a quarter of a million dollars, depending upon landmass. Um, ability to negotiate with the county is a huge concern on this one. And so in most cases, that negotiation would occur either between a hired third-party consultant, which would, would probably be a land use lawyer focusing on annexation, or it would be John Kenny's time, which lawyers are expensive. So you're gonna have quite a bit of, of a cost there. Again, the other thing, too, is there was no conversation or application filed with LAFCO, and so we would have to enter into negotiation with them to make sure that we're compliant. Um, and then we would also have to do an outreach program as part of that RFP. Um, the city staff is recommending no action on this until a feasible development proposal is possible. Um, one of the, the things, um, city manager Pope and I have been working on is the fact that the property does have a high, um, solar rating, um, and could be pre-zoned for a solar farm, which would require a much lower environmental review, um, depending upon the feasibility of that development. Um, and it would match the employment zoning for the county. Uh, so we're, we're kinda working on a couple of different proposals there. Um, in addition to that, I don't recommend using the two thousand and five Bay Area Economic Study to, as a means to justify the orchard annexation. Taking a look at the market analysis, it was a good analysis at the time, but a lot of those numbers have changed due to the recession, as well as the city's ability to apply for low-income grants and bonding for those types of projects. Um, and it's an estimated three- to four-year timeline. Um, again, the city council had previously agreed to move to the employment zoning for the pre-zoning, but frankly, like I said, you don't really have a development yet in mind for that property. Um, and I would recommend waiting until one is more viable, so that when you do, um, the feasibility study, when you do go through the annexation, it's done in a way that's going to pass. And I think one of the issues that I saw with the different staff reports and meeting minutes was that there was no clear, defined purpose for that property. Um, actually, in the, one of the meetings, each one of the city council members had a different recollection for the purpose of annexing that property. So one believed it was to get it off county tax rolls, another was to do housing, another was for economic development and employment. And so I think, first off, there needs to be a focused effort in what you wanna put there, and what could go there. Um, and that hasn't happened yet. So I think that's the first step. Um, so again, I am, I did recommend no action here, but one of the actions you could take in the meantime is to, one, continue to look at development proposals that would be feasible on that property based on the previous CDBG studies. Um, and then also move forward with an outreach program that would be fairly cost-effective. Um, it would really just consist of us reaching out to the various property owners in that area, engaging their interest in being annexed into the city and what could've been those previous issues. Um, and there could be new property owners. So you may be at a point where they would not contest. Um, the best-case scenario is that cities are able to get, um, property owners to write off a, a no contest, or, or registered, I should say, registered voters can say no contest, and then that does make the process a lot faster with LAFCO. Um, and then the other thing we can do in the meantime as well, which could be an action for city council, is to discuss the possibility of annexation with the county and begin tax negotiation, you know, pre, pre-tax negotiation discussion. Um, like I said, you only have sixty days to negotiate a tax agreement, and it can be elongated to ninety in special circumstances. But after that, if you can't reach a, a decision, you do have to move through a type of arbitration and mediation process, which again, can be very costly. Um, so though, my recommendations are either no action until a feasible, well, no action until a feasible development proposal is possible. Um, recommend reaching out to property owners to gauge interest in annexation. And then, uh, city staff recommend, um, reaching out to the county to discuss possible tax negotiation agreements.
Thank you, Juliana. Questions from council? Paul?
If we wanted to put a solar farm on there, would we still have to annex the property, or gets our property correct?
Correct. You can, you can construct the solar farm, you would just have to abide by Siskiyou County regulations, which I'm not familiar with at this time.
Would we owe them money for any revenues we would make on that? It doesn't say that we would, it would only be the taxes for improvements, correct?
Correct.
Is that what it would be?
We are, if we own it, we're, we're categorically exempt from ad valorem taxes.
Okay, so we would, county would get nothing from us?
Correct.
And we could just go ahead with the zoning? Uh, it's manufacturing right now, isn't it?
Employment manufacturing.
Yeah, which would allow a solar farm, correct?
I, I'm not familiar with the county's solar farm proposals. That would have to be a subsequent staff report.
Okay.
If, if it's annexed to the city, then our code defines...
If not, theirs does, correct.
If it stays in the county under our ownership, then we, we, as an applicant, have to comply with the county regs.
Okay.
Bruce, um, is this property gonna be part of the EIFD feasibility study?
No.
It is, it should be noted that it is part of the solar proposal.
It is. The, in the solar proposal, there, part of that proposal is due in this Friday. The statements or qualifications has a solar farm component in it.
The, the statements of qualifications has a solar farm component in it, and it identifies the, um, orchard property. So if that, if we get responses, and if they turn out to be feasible and the council ultimately decides to move forward, um, and includes a solar farm, then we would be recommending that it be on that property.
And if I remember, that, uh, staff report comes to council on the 22nd for selection of which energy services company might win the award?
I'm sorry?
October 22nd is when, okay.
And we, we get the, the proposals you do to staff this Friday. We set up an interview panel, which we've established with the public works director, myself, and an electronic engineer that has experience dealing in these types of mechanisms, to review the proposals, rank the proposals, and then we bring them to the council.
Thank you. Yes.
So, just clarification. Currently, the, the orchard property, I believe I know where it is entirely, is zoned for commercial use or in, industrial?
Heavy manufacturing.
Okay, and that was decided by the city council?
That was decided by Siskiyou County in 1980.
Oh, okay, it's a county thing, because it's still county property.
Correct. That's, the county zoning code has not been updated since 1980.
So if we, so, so clarification, if we were to annex that, go through the process you mentioned, then we'd have to do, uh, the IR to change the zoning and, uh, to housing and so forth?
I, I would recommend, it, it, it's gonna depend upon the development itself, based on the litigation. And again, I do not recommend residential for that property, just because you're situated between two noise sources. Um, if you're putting in housing or something that's going to be what we quote-unquote call a sensitive use, schools, um, daycare facilities, things like that, that would need a higher level of noise review. We could probably do that in the initial study. Um, I'm not quite sure what the arguments, um, I did take a, like, peripheral look at what the litigation was related to. Um, noise is the easy one to point out. You do have to do quite a high level of scrutiny on noise with those sensitive uses. Um, I'm not quite sure what the traffic would all entail. Um, but you could get away with doing an initial study with just beefing up those traffic and noise areas for housing-related. If you're gonna stay with heavy manufacturing, it's argued that the environmental documentation was done by Siskiyou County back in the day. Granted, it's very dated, and you'd still have to update it. But if you're doing something that's less sensitive to noise and has a very low traffic count related to it, so again, a solar farm, you would probably end up with a negative declaration. You would probably still do an initial study, but it would have a very, very low threshold of review.
Okay, so, there is no interest in doing anything with this property, with the exception of possible solar farm? There's been no calls about wanting to develop this property from anyone, or have there been?
Um, there has, there has been interest. The southern portion of the property is a wetland and intermittent stream, like I, I had mentioned. And there have been preliminary plans for a trail system and park in the southern portion.
And then that would, that, that interest was generated by the city itself?
Um, it's a, it, I believe it's actually in a Trails Association strategic document, and I think it might all...
So Mount Chastain Trail Association?
Yeah, I think it's the association, but I think there was subsequent city documentation in our Trails Master Plan related to opening it up for, um, you, park users, basically. Frankly, you can't put anything else there besides that, or like a wildlife refuge.
All right, and so, you, part of the, the solar, um, proposal we put out, RFQ, was that RFQ, RFP?
RFQ.
Yeah, did that include, again, just for clarification, that include language regarding the, the orchard for, for solar farm?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, uh, just for point of clarification, there are grants available to develop the facility as well. So it would be fairly low cost to the city to develop.
And just to clarify, we're, if we're gonna do solar farm, there's no need to annex? And it's an advantage not to, is that correct?
I wouldn't say it's necessarily in an advantage not to. The purpose of annexation is typically to bring in properties that require city services. And there's a big push by the state of California to annex communities that are currently isolated away from city services or adequate services. I think these properties in general would have a good argument to be annexed, because there are long city services already, and therefore should, the city should be benefiting off of their development. I think the big issue that has been presented in this project is that the city's been trying to annex these, for the purpose of developing these two properties. And that's the wrong justification, if that makes sense. Um, if you would like to develop your property, you may do so at any time. Um, now, whether you would like to annex, that's, that's another question. And I think the disadvantages of annexing is really, can your budget handle it? It is a very time-intensive and cost-intensive, um, issue. Um, and if we were to move forward with an annexation, you know, I think the city council does need to sit back and, and really clearly define why you're doing that. Because the other argument is, is if you're annexing along service lines that we already have, why are you not annexing out to the wastewater treatment facility, as well as parts of Siskiyou Highlands that are serviced by our sewer system? Um, so there, there's a number of different things that would have to go in if you choose to move forward with annexation. Um, but again, I'm not recommending annexation at this time, um, just until you get a feasible de-, development proposal or decide that you have a higher need for those properties.
Since I went through all that process that, uh, Juliana talked about, I've got some perspective on the matter. And as Juliana points out, it's a, annexation is a cost-benefit analysis. As long as city-owned property is in the county, the city pays tax to the county on that property. Uh, I think that the city pays about $600 a year on the orchard property. Not a lot of money. So, one issue is taxation. Another issue is control of development. Uh, and as the city manager said, uh, if the property gets developed while it is in the county, then it's the county that determines, uh, the development requirements. Uh, if the property is in the city, uh, at such time as it gets developed, then the city controls developments instead of the other governmental entity. Given the, uh, the circumstances that we have now, uh, there probably is no immediate need to look at annexation. So I, uh, while I might have some differences about the conclusions or the, the factual history, we can once again put this on hold.
Yeah. And, and really, I, I, uh, the recommendation is that no action be taken. There's, there's, there's nothing on tonight's agenda for us to take action on. It was really informational.
Thank you, and I do have some, just additional questions regarding this. So county planning, as, as you know, has had, they've had difficulty keeping their staffing filled. Uh, and it strikes me that in order to move forward with, if it's, uh, you, uh, one, one of the papers here, the staff reports you presented, talked about the importance of having solid relationships between the city and the county. And that, that would mean that the, the planning staff, uh, would need to understand and be sympathetic and, you know, work with us, right? And where are we at with county planning staffing right now?
I will defend the county planning staff and say that they are very good partners with us right now. Um, as far as, you know, negotiating the tax agreement is not gonna be between county planning or the planning department. That's usually between county council and this, and the, um, city council, um, as well as, you know, the two legislative groups. As far as the involvement of the, of the county's planning department, I think they're, you know, they're really not heavily involved in an annexation if it's being proposed by the city of Mount Chastain. So the city of Mount Chastain would be the responsible, um, party for putting together the application and pre-zoning with Lafco. Um, really, the county is only consulted during the tax agreement. So county planning really would not be involved at, in most cases.
If I can add on to that, since I do sit on Lafco. When there's an annexation, um, there is a effort to avoid creating islands, uh, which is the reason that the residential units we, would be pulled in. So, there's no sort of island or peninsula created. There, uh, is a property owner down on Ream Avenue, or off of Ream Avenue, who owns, uh, uh, two of the houses down there, uh, who, uh, was not in favor of, of annexation. But that wasn't the reason that we stopped. It was simply, uh, more an economic issue at the point, at that point in time. A consideration we have now.
Yeah. Well, the ca-, the, the cost estimate was certainly sobering. And, and the range was huge, of course, depending on different parameters. Um, but I can see the benefits of having, uh, the sphere of influence, uh, policy, uh, that we do something around policy associated with, uh, those areas that we provide services for, uh, within our sphere of influence, but that we don't have within city limits. It's not tonight's agenda, but conceptually, I can certainly understand the benefits of that. And I guess we would need to look at the, like, the situation you talked about, wastewater treatment plants, Siskiyou Highlands, all of them. Anyway, I, I don't propose that we do anything about that tonight, but it can, but, but it is, it is a policy issue that, uh, I think needs to be looked at. And my understanding, to get more specific here, that if we get a proposal to put a solar farm on that piece of land, that turns out to be cost-effective, that it would reduce the costs otherwise of a, a proposal to retrofit our energy cer-, systems, that we could do so, because it would fit within the high manufacturing, whatever that county zoning thing is, with, we, we, we could do, it's city property. We can do that as long as it fits within the county's zoning, which it does.
No, I, I can't confirm that or deny that. I'm not familiar with the Siskiyou County solar farm, or if they even have a solar ordinance. I would have to do further research, um, if that item comes up.
So, my, one of the questions I have is, do we want you to do that? Or do we want to wait until October 22nd, until we know what the proposals look like?
I would suggest that no action be taken on this matter at the time.
That we what?
That we take no action and, and have staff take no action on this matter at this time.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
So we have a motion to just take no action. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Paul? Any opposed?
Oh, I have a question.
Okay. It's a fine, sorry. Council discussion.
We are getting, uh, the proposal from the solar people when, and then we can bring back up then, correct?
Uh, the proposals are due, and here, uh, on it before 5:00 PM this Friday.
Okay. So we just table this now and bring it up later, correct?
I think we just did that.
The item tonight was, the agenda item tonight was only for informational purposes. It was not an action item tonight. So, we really can't take a, any action, other than there was a question of whether we should direct staff to do anything in the immediate future. So, did you vote on that? You voted affirmatively on, on the motion.
So it was a unanimous vote to delay or to, to take no action. Uh, and for the audience's purposes, there is no one in the audience, so this time, when I didn't go to public comments, because there's no one sitting out there. Okay. Okay. All right. So we move now to, uh, council reports on attendance at appointed outside meetings. I attended the League of California Cities, their annual conference. I voted as you requested, and those resolutions passed, uh, with a very minor amendment, the specifics of which I frankly can't remember. It was a wording change that, that, that the members agreed to. Uh, and I did, uh, include my report in the, in the package, and I don't want to go over it, except I do want to, uh, go over the wildfire one, because I think, um, I, I, because of the importance of it to our community. And if, uh, if you have questions about the rural communities' presentation, uh, it went very well. Uh, I mentioned that we're 150, that the room was completely maxed at 150 people. Uh, we got much appreciation. We had 34 people sign up to be part of our recommended formation committee. We need a committee to figure out how to form a rural working group. And I think we have, our next step is to figure out what the dispersal of the, um, cities in the room who said they want to move forward, how they look statewide, because we'd like to see statewide distribution of rural cities' involvement. So that's the next step we'll be taking on as a small committee. And, and everybody wanted to be on the mailing list. So, um, it will be up to you folks how you want to continue in the rural communities' agenda with the league, uh, following my departure. And I have plenty of background material for any of you who are interested. As regards the wildfire, uh, session, it was called the New Normal. The Santa Rosa mayor spoke about the Tubbs Fire. He, both, both he and the deputy mayor from Ventura, who experienced the Thomas Fire, uh, both expressed the need to be prepared in advance. Both fires started 12 mi-, miles outside town and were at town limits in three hours. Their fire department in Santa Rosa had to decide to save lives over property. The recommendation to elected officials is to take emergency preparation very seriously, to understand your role, and especially what your role is not. He found it very, um, curious that he didn't have much info and wouldn't, couldn't get any, because people were busy fighting fire, evacuating people, uh, getting, getting the situation under control. So council members, including the mayor, had very little information. Uh, and, and therefore, um, you know, uh, couldn't contribute to whatever rumors or whatever facts that needed to be circulated. He said it's really critical that you know how your communication lines will work. He said to anticipate infrastructure impacts. They had water pressure problems due to melted plastic having been pulled back into the system. One of their fire stations was lost, burned down. Um, their, ultimately, their general funds reserve was reduced from $37 to $6 million. That was the impact of, of some of their infrastructure issues during the course of the recovery. People lost a sense of security. He said they'll never be the same. It's critical to do immediate and continuous public outreach. Their recovery planning was immediate. They began town hall meetings immediately, and, uh, within one week, and they were extremely well-attended. And he said the opportunity to, uh, listen to people's concerns was tantamount. They just needed to listen and respond. Uh, the debris cleanup cost them $1 billion. It was done by California OES. There was extensive equipment and street damage, still, almost, it's almost complete one year later, all the damage. Of course, this is a much bigger city than we are. Regarding the rebuilding permit process, they created a separate department, because they had so many traumatized homeowners, each of which needed custom, uh, service. The first homeowner moved in after seven and a half months. Many, and this was the experience in weed, in the Weed Fire too, the Bull's Fire, many homeowners were underinsured, and many were not ready emotionally to even begin the process. So it's been a very slow process. It's one that we would need to anticipate. Creating a separate department, I'm not sure. We only have one person in our planning department, but perhaps we could bring people in from outside. Uh, in Ventura, again, the fire started 12 miles away. They were being evacuated, and the power was out two hours later. Two hours after the fire started to, 12 miles away. No power. They were evacuating 27,000 people at night, going door to door. Uh, city hall was in the fire zone. It had to move to an outlighting, uh, police department office. Santa Rosa city manager, who had just experienced the Tubbs Fire, arrived to help, and, and... Santa Rosa's city manager, who had just experienced the Tubbs Fire, arrived to help, and they guided the process, which they said was critical. I talked to Bruce this morning about instituting a similar thing. Perhaps we could get the city manager from Redding, who's just experienced the car fire, or even Ron Stock from Weed, who experienced the Bull's Fire, to help us out through the processes. Critical to be prepared ahead, you need training in FEMA, Incident Command System, which of course we've undertaken emergency procurement policies, and federal regulations. They strongly suggested that we meet now with county OES and get some of that training coming and some of that relationship building. And I understood that the county OES officer is the fire chief out of Montague. I don't know. I don't know if we have talked with them about what their role is. But Bruce, I recommend that when you pull the parties together, that county OES be a critical party. They recommended that we create volunteer certified emergency response teams in advance, that those volunteers were critical in going door-to-door and listening and responding to issues. And FEMA sponsors that training. I've recommended it several times, and I hope we follow up on that, because our first responders may very well be involved in the operations of the fire and won't be available to evacuate or to assist people in any real way. It's important to build strong relationships beforehand, county, state, and federal. It's important to have backup generators on hand, because if the power goes out, that's your only backup. We need robust records for homeowners, because when homeowners start coming in, we need to have those records on hand. We need advanced notification system to reach employees for assignments. Employees will be scattered all over. How do we get, how do we reach them? In terms of public-private partnerships, defensible space, community preparedness, explain your evacuation routes, have your traffic patterns explained. Disaster response, issue a disaster declaration as soon as possible, if that's what it amounts to, and establish a local assistance center where people can have a one-stop shopping experience. As they said, that was hugely beneficial in Ventura. So they assembled all the various people that homeowners and others would need. I've said over-communicate town halls to listen and share information. They did it weekly for the first month. And be sure to praise your staff. Your staff is just working around the clock, and we should not forget to praise them, because they're the ones that are doing the work. In terms of recovery, most homeowners used CalRecycle, which I think it was true in the Bull's Fire, but some chose to use a local debris removal company. And lastly, communication. During that time, release positive stories. Continue to promote your city as a visitor destination and that you are open for business. And if you can, offer incentives for people to continue to come. They used free parking as an incentive. We might find something else. So important notes, I think, lessons to be learned, and I, I'd really like to see us include on a future agenda item, some of the items that I mentioned here, and we can get to that in a moment.
I think.
And that's my report.
I'd ask that your expanded report be made part of the minutes.
It was made part of the agenda package.
Well, I read what was in the agenda packet. It sounded like you had, had more than that.
I have more than that, only for rural communities. The rural communities, yeah. Otherwise, I reported very briefly on the other sessions I attended. Yeah, and that's in there. Okay. We're ready now to move to future agenda items. I want to thank the council for approving my travel there. It was, and I want to recommend to you all that you, that you attend the Northern California one next year. Those of you particularly who haven't gone, it's a tremendous learning opportunity. They do a fabulous job of, of teaching us about issues, and of course, there's always the networking and the, and the vendor displays, and it's definitely something to get involved with.
Those are great notes.
Welcome. Okay, future agenda items, suggestions for additions.
I put some thought into how we can expand our appreciation for our city's water, and I understand it's going to be a really quick and easy fix to convert a lot of the spigots that we have into drinking fountains. So I was wondering if we could ask Public Works to address that, to install additional drinking fountains throughout the city using the existing infrastructure of water spigots.
Do you want to set this as a specific future agenda item, or do you want just to get a report on feasibility?
I'd like.
How you want to handle this?
I'd like to hear a report on feasibility, maybe even including price, and, does that make sense? You have a questionable look in your face?
I'm just sorting through it. I was, I was thinking the staff report. A staff report?
Yeah, a staff report to begin, I think, for consideration.
You might go through beautification and mountain runners on something like that.
Oh, yeah.
They've done a lot of projects in the past.
Good point. You're talking about, like, in the downtown area, where people might converge?
Well, I'm wondering if there are other potential spots. Downtown's good. I think maybe the parks even. When I was at the Blackberry Festival, Bayla was there with her, you know, water bottle refill station.
Of course, they have water at the park. Do they have drinking fountains at the park?
They do. Yeah.
There has been a, part of Parker Plaza Park was put in a water fountain at the south end of the park. That hasn't happened yet, but that's something that was part of the plan or proposal, so.
Yeah, we'd definitely like to see a water fountain at Parker Plaza, for example, yeah. But, yeah, I'm open to how you want to implement that, or I thought, I don't know who, how it would start, and who would be ultimately responsible. I thought initially it would be city par, or, what do you say, the park district's city cooperation, sort of like have both work together to establish where some additional water fountains might be useful. I don't know.
Interesting idea. Sure. So what we've asked for is a, is a staff report, or a city manager memo to begin with?
So I'll work with the Public Works Director. We'll look at feasibility, possible placement, cost analysis, and we'll put together a report. We will also kind of lay out a program if it appears feasible, and where it, where it would be appropriate. We take it by existing committees, get input, and then we put all that together, bring it to the managers' report.
Okay. Okay. Other suggestions? I have, go ahead, John.
Yeah, so Thrive Hive, you had mentioned something about that in the past. Were they working on?
We're still working on it.
Okay, putting together a.
Yes.
The contract with them first?
Well, we have the contract. We're putting together what is called a landing page and an ad page, and we've been through multiple renditions. I think we're closer on the landing page than we've been, but I think it needs some revision. And so we're still working with Amy Liner, but we are moving that forward.
Okay, so that'll be an agenda item when it's time to approve the.
You've already approved it. Now it's time to finalize it and do it.
I guess I was looking for an update on that.
If the council, if it is the council's desire to see this before we go out with it, you know, give final blessing, we can certainly do that.
I have a couple of suggestions. It seems like it's time to hear from the chamber about their annual accomplishments as per the contract, and I don't know whether we should do that as a special report or, or an agenda item.
You don't want to do presentation?
I'm sorry?
Not the presentation slot?
Well, that's, I don't know. I don't know what's most appropriate. The contract is good through next June.
Well, we, report from the chamber would be good, I think, coupled with a report from the finance director on the sales tax, the impact of the fires. Those sales tax reports come out quarterly, so that would be the end of this month, that they will start putting together, which means we, we, the city, would probably receive this sometime toward the end of October. So tying those two together shows the activities of chambers and possible impacts of the fires on our economic activities. It might be good to combine those.
Okay. Yeah, good. There's a mention in Juliana's report tonight about how the, our specific plan process does not comply with state law. I think it would be good to get us in compliance.
It's on the list.
What?
It's on the list already.
It is on the list?
No, it's not on your future agenda items. It's on my list. There's other things we should probably do before we do that, but we'll address that.
It's on her to-do list.
Okay.
It's not what you need to do right now. It's not like you have a specific plan that's happening. You're okay?
Correct, but, okay. I'll leave it to you, council members, who will continue to keep that in mind, that apparently our specific planning process doesn't comply with state law. And so if we get a proposal at the landing, for instance, for which we need a specific plan.
You already have a specific plan for them. You're okay.
Unless we don't, unless we change it.
So is this because our methods were not updated, or just?
It really doesn't.
Changing the state rules, and we just didn't update ours?
Yeah, you actually have a lot of municipal code that does that. In those cases, we usually just follow the state code to be compliant with the state.
When the, when the, when the specific.
When, when our, yeah, when our code conflicts with the state, we always go with the state, similar to the ADUs and things like that. So it's really not an issue. You have a lot of illegal code, and we don't follow, but we go by state code. So it's not a huge issue that needs to be addressed anytime soon.
Okay. Lastly, I just want to let you know that Bruce's performance period is coming to a close here of the annual performance evaluation. I'd like to do it before I leave office here. So my intention is to send out on October 12th, the performance rating form that we used last year, a blank. I'm going to ask you to fill it out, return it to me probably within a week, something like that. And then we'll have a closed, and I've, we'll have a closed session at the end of the October 22nd agenda to, to review the summary comments, the summary of his performance rating, so that I can then deliver it after that. I've asked Bruce to fill it out on himself this year, his own evaluation, and I've asked him to propose city goals for next year as part of that process. So I'd like to add Bruce's performance rating as a closed session for the 22nd meeting, although the 22nd is filling up pretty quickly.
I would suggest it be the first meeting in November, in light of.
Yeah, yeah. That's fine with me. Maybe we do that, first meeting in November.
I might call it to the council's attention that, right now, it appears that the future agenda items, if we move the items we were talking about earlier, the council agenda for the 22nd would include seven items at this point.
Yeah.
Two of which are general plan-related?
Two of which, yeah, would be fairly lengthy.
Okay. So let's just do the performance rating on the next one, the first meeting in November. Is that an agreement, everybody? Okay.
I had one more suggestion. It's still in the incubation stage, and I want to be a town that's tiny house-friendly, and I thought the easiest way to do that was to, would be to allow driveways to be used for people coming through with tiny houses, and parking in driveways as a, as sort of an Airbnb-type of rental, short-term rental idea. I'm wondering if the city would be willing to consider that as an, as a potential way to enter into the tiny house-friendly value system.
So I'm wondering if you could, how you feel about bouncing this stuff off of Bruce? Have you already talked to Bruce about it? To get some background on this item before you bring it up as a future agenda item. We do have the agenda form process and all of that. Have you?
I've had some general conversations about tiny houses in general. I'm just wondering if this is the easiest way to step forward into being tiny house-friendly as a town, or, but I can continue to have, to look into it and have more conversations, if that's what you're suggesting.
I bet that that would be something that our vision, our general plan vision, would, I mean, where do we, where do we tackle that kind of?
My first reaction is that tiny houses could be part of your housing element.
Is, is what?
Tiny houses could be part of the housing element in the general plan, or at least something that could be considered. If you're going to allow tiny houses, you're not going to go out here and create a whole ordinance, you know, subdivide a whole mass of property for just tiny houses. You're looking at this more in the context of supplementing of other houses, and under what context or what conditions would you allow a tiny house to be built? For instance, would you allow tiny houses, all of which come on wheels, to be placed in the city on wheels? Would you require skirting? Would you require a permanent foundation, as you presently do?
City manager may offer a recommendation for time's sake. If the council is interested in investigating tiny house policy, I would recommend that you refer the manner to Planning Commission with a set of, you know, bullet points of, we are interested in tiny homes as a means of permanent housing, or we are interested in tiny homes as a means for economic development, vacation rentals. That's how I would recommend that.
That's basically where I was going.
Yeah.
So you're saying, get clear on what, with what you want, and then recommend it to planning, to have planning look into it?
Right.
Okay.
Your Planning Commission is your planning entity, and so you should use them as such.
Okay. Thank you. If there's nothing else, I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.